Members joining me to my far left, Councilmember Juan, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Marcy Carrioverstreet. And then, of course, to my right is Councilmember Farroki. Making motion to adopt the agenda. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. Making motion to approve the minutes. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Leader is aye.
The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
As you have heard, we have been joined by Councilmember Jason Dozier. That takes us to our public comment. Mr. Johnson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. One moment.
Okay. As they prep that, remember everyone, we have three minutes for public comments. The committee asks that you direct all comments to the committee itself. Please be respectful in your body language and your language. First up, we have Mr. Michael Jones. And you have been yielded. You have like three people that have yielded time to you, but to my understanding, only two can yield time, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The total minutes that the speakers will receive will be 10 minutes.
Will be 10 minutes? Okay, so that'd give you two people assigned would be nine. The third person will put you over the top. So you will have your nine minutes.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
10 minutes. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Approximately eight days ago, I watched on the news, I watched Watershed come down here with 42 employees to talk about their bullying situation by Mr. McKitt, Cedric McKitt. And good for them, because the next day, y'all made sure he was gone. There's going to be an investigation. Hot dog. Well, I was sitting at home and I was thinking, well, we did the same thing March 13th, 2024, except we brought 100 employees down here complaining about our bully, Christopher Jackman. And nothing's been done since. Not one thing has been done to Christopher. It's only gotten worse. It has gotten so bad, you have employees leaving early, forfeiting their pensions and getting out of there. Christopher Jackman is nothing more than a bully. And I can prove it to you. Other than the mounting evidence I have, other than recordings we have of this man, every day, he comes in, he puts somebody on administrative leave, he makes sure he punishes employees, especially those of us who come down here, i.e. me especially. In the last 10 months, I've been written up eight times. I've been put on administrative leave twice. That's 10 months I've spent, no, seven months I've spent on administrative leave in the past 10 months. Why? If I'm that bad of an employee, terminate me. Get rid of me. I wouldn't want an employee that bad around me, would you? Shoot, no. But you know what's happened? Nothing. I keep going back and keep getting bullied. By the grace of God, I keep my job. A 22-year veteran. They've tried to take my job from me three times, Christopher Jackman twice. Not one time have I been terminated. Not one time. But he keeps bullying. Keeps writing me up. And it's not just me. But I can speak on mine. Because not only has he turned, he's tried to terminate me, he's tried to put me on administrative leave, bullying. He's docked my pay, taking money out of my pension, taking money out of my pocket, out of my family's mouths. In a time where prices are outrageous, he's taking money out of my pocket. And nobody's doing a thing about it. This man invades our privacy, watches drive cam feeds live, watches CCTV, watches our female employees, our male employees, follows them to lunch to make sure they don't do anything wrong. Now, we got problems down there at the Department of Aviation. Problems that endanger the lives of the public, airline employees, city employees. He's not worried about those. He's worried about disciplined employees changing their off days so they can't worship that way they want to, whether they're Muslim or Christian or Seventh Day Adventist or Jewish. He doesn't care, because it doesn't affect him. We are going to be punished for coming down here starting March 13th, 2024. I've been out here half a dozen times, said his name. Christopher Jackman, Christopher Jackman, bullying. Our people have been threatened not to come down here, they'll lose their job. We've tried to tell you many a times, Councilman Amos, Councilman Farroki, Councilwoman Overstreet, Dozier, Councilman Juan, Councilman Hillis. He'll even make up rules outside of the scope of the City of Atlanta's policies and procedures to take time away from me and other employees. Now, in the council meeting back in January, I told Councilman Lewis, I said, we're not getting any help from Human Resources. And we weren't. But magically, on January 31st, Candace Colson Company showed up down at Department of Aviation. And they did some interviews. And I know exactly who they interviewed, because everybody talked to me about it. I was still on administrative leave. They interviewed me. We all had the same thing to say about Christopher Jackman being a bully. As January 31st, it's April 30th. We've heard nothing. Nothing at all. But Watershed brings 42 employees down here and they get their bully gone. What are we doing wrong? Why are y'all afraid of the Department of Aviation? Why are y'all afraid to do investigations? Why are you not afraid to confront Christopher Jackman? To ask him why the bullying? I'm the only one being put on administrative leave for asking these questions. Christopher Jackman is not being held accountable. Why? 22-year career, not a blemish on it. Until now. Had the audacity to speak up for my coworkers. The difference between myself and my coworkers is now I can afford the law offices of Rafford and Scott. They cannot, so I have to come down here and speak on it. On my birthday, I had to come down here on administrative leave and talk about this bully yet again. Because I watched Watershed come down here and get everything they want every time they come down here. Including that 412 that we fought for. And we fought tooth and nail. And we finally got it July 24. The problem with that was July 21 to July 24, it was stopped. Why didn't we get the retro pay for it? What happened to our money, that government money? That 412 from July 2021, I gave you all the information before in one of these meetings. I've been out here half a dozen times. To July 2024, what happened to our money? And the reason we harp about money so much is because because of Christopher Jackman, there's zero way for us to get a raise from year to year unless the mayor okays a cost of living across the board. We don't get increments. We don't get reviews. Now, we're forced to do self-reviews by Christopher Jackman to make him look good, but we're not getting any money for it. We're not getting one nickel. Do you know who is getting raises every year? Every year, we see the budget. Jan Lennan will get a raise, Christopher Jackman will get a raise. We're not. We're not getting anything. We're stuck in a pay compression we've come down here and complained about. We're still missing our retro pay for our 412. We don't know what happened to money. I mean, down here screaming about audit. Do an audit on the Department of Aviation. Find out what happened to that money. It was earmarked for us. You stopped it in 2021 July. We got it in July 2024. What happened to the three years' worth of our money? It's our money. We earned it. While everybody else was at home doing work, who were just now having to come back in, we're out there, boots on the ground, risking our lives on that airfield. Still do it today. And what do we get for it? Nothing. We get bullied every day by Christopher Jackman. Again, I'm sitting here on administrative leave for the second time in 10 months. If I'm that bad, folks, get rid of me. But if I'm not, call it what it is. It's retaliation. The City of Atlanta does not do retaliation. They, it's not acceptable. It's a farable offense. Well, what are we going to do? Don't take my word for it. Come investigate me. Miss LaChandra Burke, come down here and talk to us. Talk to our people. Don't just talk to Watershed. You think those bullying thing charges that Cedric McKitt did was bad? Come down here and find out what Christopher Jackman's doing to us. No one's being held accountable. I can't believe it to this day that this man can bully so many of us. I don't understand why we are so scared to deal with the Department of Aviation. I don't understand how Watershed can come down here just 42 deep and get their point across. Meanwhile, we had grown men and women crying on national TV, March 13th, 2024. And Christopher Jackman is still out there bullying employees day after day. He'll try to get rid of you on a Sunday morning, 7:30 with the police there. 7:30 in the morning is when I was called in, Sunday morning. Couldn't do it. Didn't even have union representation. Told me he didn't care. I've got more time, because I was terminated in 2018, he got my job back in 2024, or 2023. I've got more time built up than anybody. I've been trying to use it for two years. Two years, I've been trying to get this time dwindled down. Christopher Jackman says, no. I don't care if you lose your time or not. I'll let you know when you can use it. I've been on administrative leave for seven months. I've been trying to use this time while, be on administrative leave. Kill two birds with one stone. If you don't want me there, I'm not going to be there. At least let me go see my family. At least let me go to funerals. Don't hold me hostage day after day at home on the off chance you might call me in. Spent four months, folks. Four months of sitting at home being held hostage. I've got the emails begging to use my time off. It's leaving. It's just going away. I'm losing it. He don't care. Y'all don't seem to care. Human Resources don't seem to care. What do we do? We come to y'all begging hat in hand. What happened to our money? And why do we have to keep dealing with this bully? Why do I have to keep losing time? Why can't we use our time? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Robertson. You have one person yielding time to you, so you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the rest of the body. I'm going to come down here today, but first let me start off by saying that I greatly appreciate Ms. Rashawn Spencer, our newly appointed Director of OCC. Very personable, very honest and very transparent, so I appreciate that. I have two questions that I have to ask this body, because I, I think this is a very intentional and intelligent body. First question is, why are we allowing Uber, who owed the city almost 200 grand in permit fees, to partner with another company, they're trying to backdoor and use the company called Groom to do shuttle service from downtown to midtown? Uber is evaluated at $168 billion, with a B, and we allowing them to owe the city money? My theory is, because I know we have maybe two lobbyists that are friends and donate to certain people that work for Uber, and we cannot allow that. I don't care who they are, how much they donate, who they close with. We cannot allow billion-dollar companies to owe the city money and still operate. We can't do that. Second thing that I don't like that I read is that the airport is raising the parking fees. I think one is going from maybe, I think like $3 to $10, and another one is escalating from 10 to 19. Why are we not working in increments to get there? Yes, I do agree that Atlanta is an international city. We should have competitive parking. But you don't hijack the parking rates like that overnight to get to where we should be due to inflation. We can't allow that. Like, I think we need to put a stop to that. And we need to figure out another way to get there, but not overnight. And another thing that I'm sure have come across you guys' desks is this situation with the concession piece. I think global, on global concession. Me personally, I want to, I want to ask on camera. How did we allow them to owe the city almost $6 million from 2018 until last year? How do we allow that? Who was in charge of that that allowed that? Because somebody allowed that. They owed the city money. And now, from what I hear and from what I looked into, they filed for bankruptcy, which means it stops the debtors from collecting their money. So we allowed them to take advantage of the loophole. I mean, that's what, you know what I'm saying? The game was there for people to avoid certain things. Now we allowed that, and now we won't even be able to collect what is owed to the city. We got to get ahead of these things, and we cannot allow these things. I don't care who worked for these people or who. Hey, man, we can't allow people to owe, because guess what? I can't owe anything to the city. But it seemed like when you're in a certain bracket that you can allow, I mean, that you can get away with certain things, and we can just not allow that. My favorite thing I always say, nobody's above reproach. Uber, definitely not. I don't care how much money they donate, how much they carry. Pay your share. You got it. You got it. There is a difference when people don't have it. Then we make concessions for those people. But when you have it such as Uber, and then we need to peel lines, Groom, when you guys do your research and see that they have allowed Uber to try to backdoor and become a minority partner with them, which nothing about Uber is a minority. We should not allow them to be able to partner with Groom and to maneuver and finesse their way in to do business with the City of Atlanta when they owe the City of Atlanta. We cannot allow that. And we need to find out how global concessions owed these millions of dollars since 2018. And if it didn't work for them, and if some things happened, we know COVID happened. And if that's the case, then we need to have those conversations. But before COVID, why did you owe? And I'm sure they got the ERC money and some more things that was awarded during COVID. Why you didn't pay that back from that money? We have to ask these questions. We cannot just let people escape without asking these questions, because I'm quite sure I was a restaurant owner during COVID. They was giving away big money. And I'm quite sure that they were qualified for, being that they was at the airport and the type of revenue they was missing. I'm quite sure that they got between $6 to $12 million from ERC. I can, I would bet my bottom line on it. And we have to just ask these tough questions and not worry about who it offends. And we can just not allow those things to happen. And welcome to Atlanta, Mr. Ricky Smith. I graduated from Morgan State, so I asked a lot of people about you from Baltimore. Everybody had great things to say about you, man. So welcome to Atlanta. And I wish you well out there. You surrounded by a bunch of good people, so I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Ms. Jennifer Burks. And actually approached, we have been joined by our colleague, Councilman Hillis as well.
Thank you, Chair Amos, and I just want to thank all of you for your ongoing commitment to our city and all of the challenges that you're facing. I've just come from Central Atlanta Progress, had a morning session today that was dealing with preparedness for the World Cup. And that was very insightful. And it's a very critical time that we have now while we're waiting for the Club World Cup this summer and then for 2026. On Sunday, I volunteered at Atlanta Streets Alive on Peachtree, and it weighed heavy on my heart that that event would occur and close Peachtree Street on a weekend when there were 70,000 people here for the NRA. The next Peachtree closure is scheduled for the 22nd of June, when there is a World Cup, Club World Cup game organized by FIFA at Mercedes-Benz. I think it's really important for us to show our readiness and our commitment to FIFA at every opportunity. I'm, above all, wanting to be supportive of your work and the work of Commissioner Kavanus and his teams. But I would ask if there's a way to have some oversight in the planning of big events and permitting of big events when they coincide with other big events, some of which are planned five or 10 years out. And all these big events are very demanding on the people who provide the support services. And I guess, other than being supportive of you, I am kind of protective of everybody I encounter in the public safety realm. And I want us not to make more work for them, but to collaborate with them and the event people to make it all very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. Justin Tripoli.
Good morning, committee members. My apologies. I've never been to a transportation meeting, and I just signed in. So my apologies for that. I'm not here to speak. My colleague also, Michael, who's after me, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That actually brings us to the end of our public comment session. Normally, we would move into communications, but I do see we have been joined by Chief Operating Officer COO Burks for, if she want to make, to address the committee.
Good morning. You all got six minutes back. Just by two people backing out by, but good morning again. My name is LaChandra Burks. I serve as the Chief Operating Officer for the City of Atlanta. To Mr. Chair, Mr. Amos, and members of the Transportation Committee meeting, again, good morning. And I am just here, nothing too formal, no presentation. But we did get a request to just kind of follow up a little bit on a copy of the letter that you all received that I sent to our Atlanta Board members at MARTA specifically related to Summerhill. And again, I just wanted to take the opportunity to just brief you all on a couple of projects. Specifically in the Moore MARTA that we have with MARTA in relations to the two that are very, very out in the public, that you all are getting questions about, that we're getting questions about, specifically Five Points and Summerhill BRT. But as it relates to Five Points, as you all know, we have finally got into a permitting process for the demolition of the canopy and the walls on the side. We are still awaiting additional information for the permits from MARTA to actually build the new structure. So I wanted to, you know, we're hearing permits are issued, permits are issued. But the permits that have been issued are for the actual demolition and not the construction as of yet. And then the other one really is Summerhill. Many of you have seen in the news and received my letter, and what you know is that we have been working very closely with MARTA on, you know, four or five projects that we have underway right now. And when we received a request for the additional increase for the Summerhill BRT, in addition to the additional delays in delivering the project, we were surprised as well. And so I just wanted you all to know that we're working closely with MARTA. We have requested some very specific information from them around projects, on all of our projects that are currently going. The challenges that they see, what we think some of the overruns may be, the expenses to date, the budgeted amount. So we have asked for some very specific information. So I wanted you all to just know that we are working very hard, and we appreciate your support input that you always provide as it relates to the Moore MARTA program. But we are going to be very intentional about making sure this program is going forward. One of the other pieces that comes up a lot really is around, as relates to Moore MARTA, the positions that we have that we can be reimbursed for. So we are in the process, while we have had some staff who've kind of been serving some dual roles. We are finalizing interviews over the next couple of weeks for two very specific positions, where they will be engaged on a daily basis around Moore MARTA, and that will be their only responsibility. So you all will hear more about that as well. But again, as I stated, nothing formal, just wanted to come by. You all know we're always available when you have operational questions. But just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we are following this closely and working very hard to bring the projects that are currently in place to bear. But we also have to understand this huge increase for Summerhill BRT, what does that also mean for other projects? And so that's where we are today. So, Mr. Chair, that was it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, COO Burks. Good to see you, as always. I will say, I am in agreement. I was also just very frustrated with the news about Summerhill BRT. I've been a strong believer that with that being the Sea of Atlantis very first BRT project, if we don't get that right, how do we, how do I convince my colleague who represents both the Campbellton Road about the Campbellton BRT, had I convinced my colleague, Councilman Juan, who with the Clifton Corridor, that we're going to have great projects in their communities as well. So I'm deeply disappointed. My operational question that I do have for you is, even though I'm tracking that revenue service won't begin until after World Cup, what does that mean from a construction standpoint? Are we still going to have a bunch of construction equipment on city streets while we have all that World Cup activities happening? Is there anything that we're looking at doing to, even if there's no bus coming through, to still have transportation access or opportunities for both residents as well as visitors? Just kind of if you, if I haven't taken a look at that yet.
Sure. And that is, you've made some very great points as it relates to Clifton Corridor, Campbellton Road, as well as what does this delay in the Summerhill BRT mean for us and our preparedness for World Cup, which we just heard some public comments on. So we are working closely with MARTA on that now and what that would look like with this delay. I'm trying to see how much we can get done before World Cup. Is there a piece of it that can run? A small portion of it that can run and have a stop and then turn backwards? So we're working on a couple of different things on what that looks like, but what I can promise you is that you will not see streets torn up, you will not see construction equipment on site. When we get to a point where we have to stop and clear, we will stop and clear and come up with a transportation plan between APD and ATL DLT that will work during World Cup. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Juan.
Mr. Chair, I actually have a different question than MARTA, so I'm going to yield to my colleague and then come back. Clearly, I'm in witness protection now. I'm not sure why I don't have a photo anymore. But before I do, though, I do want to underscore what Councilmember Dozier said. I mean, the Moore MARTA project list was already under a lot of budget pressure, and the anxiety that I had for the project in my district is now heightened a little bit. So to the extent, or whenever y'all do drill down in terms of what the actual impact is, I hope we'll have kind of a good conversation about the spillover and trickle down, trickle over effects into the other projects. So, so, Mr. Chair, I will yield and then come back.
Thank you, Overstreet.
Thank you so much, COO Burks, for coming to speak with us today. I do want to ask a couple of questions, because, you know, anxiety is a really nice term for what we are feeling with the news that we read this week. Because we are concerned. Well said by Councilmember Dozier. I really want to feel confident in delivering Campbellton Road, Summerhill, Clifton Corridor, like all of them. And we are already years behind. And it feels as if even when our backs are up against the wall and we have to deliver this project. I mean, we're, it's the World Cup. It's a big deal. We're still not delivering. And that is hard to swallow. It is. And my question to you is, how does this line up with the council ratified audit and those findings? With us finding out that MARTA, MARTA, more money, I mean, more MARTA money funding is $70 million short, and then they did their own audit, and there's another amount there. But how can we be requested to give more funding to a project that is funded when we're owed funds? How, how, how do we reconcile that?
So I think very, very good questions, Councilmember Overstreet. And especially, we've had so many meetings and been through a lot on Campbellton Road, BRT, as well as Summerhill and the others. And so as it relates to the actual audit, I think there is, and our CFO does a great job of explaining
job of explaining the difference between the two. The type of audit we had versus a financial assessment that MARTA did. Very different, very different. And so we presented to, the mayor, myself, and all of us, senior team presented to the MARTA Board, and expressed our concerns about where we are with the audit findings and rectifying that. Fortunately, MARTA Board Chair and former Councilmember Jennifer Ives has been working very closely with us. She is in the process of putting together a joint committee between city and MARTA with senior leadership to work through the differences that they feel they see in the audit, and how we come to some type of reconciliation, knowing that what they did was a financial assessment and not a complete audit. Because if you look at even the length of time that it took us to complete the full audit versus the time that it took them to complete a financial assessment, which is an appropriate timeframe, they are very different financial documents that came to us.
Okay.
And so we are working very closely with them on that.
Okay, so understanding that, that means that at the end of that joint committee, there should be a total that is owed to the city, because everyone agrees that there's money, funding owed to the city, to our taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Like, this is the half penny sales tax from our taxpayers, people that we're supposed to be delivering these projects to. I live here, I want these projects completed. That amount that is owed to the city, how do we then now say, this project, Summer Hill, is not going to be delivered on time or on the new time? And we, we're not in budget anymore, for however they calculate that. We owe you money, we're clear on that, we just don't know how much yet, but we're going to need you to give us some more of our taxpayer money for this project that we're not delivering. I want to know, because I have, I'm very unready about that. Like, that's not something that, that I can rationalize or make any kind of sense to my community about, we're not delivering it, we're owed money, and we're asked to wait for the project and give more money. Like, those, you can't reconcile that. So I do want to know the plan. I do, I don't want an indefinite joint committee. Was there a timeline mentioned during that conversation?
We're working on the timeline now. I will say, between the MARTA Board members who we presented to, and of course, our senior leadership team, as well as you all, we know, shorter is better. So everybody was very clear, this is not something to be extended out for a long period of time.
Okay.
And so we are working on that timeline, and I'll make sure that that is communicated back to you all, and then we will give frequent updates in that timeline and the results of those meetings.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Chair Amos, I do believe that we need to have a presentation as soon as they come up with that timeline about what we're speaking about today, about Summer Hill BRT from MARTA, and that needs to happen as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Duly noted, thank you. And Councilmember Juan.
All right, so make sure there aren't any more MARTA questions before I, so this is, I'm going to pivot, but it's related, because I think all our, we're now in the ninth inning in terms of World Cup prep and readiness from the city. And one of those is a lot of the infrastructure projects, the transportation infrastructure projects that we've been talking about in the, from Moving Atlanta Forward, Renew Atlanta, and then the $120 million bond issuance, and then we're going into budget, so this is the perfect time to be talking about it. Last fall, we passed a resolution asking for an update of the remaining balances, the open projects. I did get a document this morning from Commissioner Kavanis, but it's rolled up in its aggregate for the three different categories. That's not what we need, and so I'm just going to publicly ask for that again, because if we have these outstanding projects and we're trying to get all this stuff done before next year, we need to know where we stand, both in terms of project status and project funding. And so I'm just going to keep asking publicly until we get it, because, like I said, we're about to go into budget hearings, and we're in the ninth inning. So I'm just going to ask for that, please.
Sure. No, and rightfully so, Councilmember Juan, you will have that. I had an opportunity to look at the summary before it was given to you, and I had a few questions myself, but I wanted us, I wanted you to know that we were at least working on it. And I can commit to you that within the next couple of weeks, we are looking at breakdown by council district also, so that everyone will have the benefit of knowing where their projects are between Renew and Moving Atlanta Forward, what those projects are, and where we see gaps, if any.
So I'm going to push back a little bit, because this was a piece of legislation that we passed in October.
You gave us so many days.
I did, and then we extended that in a previous transportation committee. I asked you about it, and you said you'd have it within 30 days of that meeting, and we are well past that now. Another two weeks is going to be too late. I mean, we will already have had the departments come before us in budget, and how can we talk about staffing and operational needs and projections when we have almost, gosh, I would venture to guess probably half a billion dollars worth of backlog work that we have to factor in? I'm going to express my disappointment that it, to me, indicates or suggests that we have very poor project management and financial controls on these issues. We still need to wait another two weeks for these numbers, and we asked for this in October. So something, I hope it's not because it's bad news, because the closer we get to election, the more the public is going to be on front of mind of that, for them. And I'd rather us just be honest, rip the Band-Aid off, and let's have a great conversation about it so that we can plan versus getting caught on our back foot with this huge showcase coming up in less, in 12 months. I'm, yeah, I use the word anxiety now, before, and the word now is panic, because I just don't understand why we haven't gotten this information when it should be part of your team's project management processes. I've been dancing with my constituents about where our projects are, and I've run out of steps. I, you know, no more costume changes, no more pyrotechnics, I don't know how to deflect it anymore, so I need y'all's help and support in helping the public understand why tenure projects still aren't delivered and we can't provide meaningful data to them as to where the project stands, so I...
So absolutely, and thank you for that. I always appreciate your honesty, we always say that. And I hope that one thing you've learned about me is delaying bad news doesn't make it any better. I'm always going to be open and honest, I'm going to give you the good, the bad, and the ugly. I will ask for forgiveness at the end, but I am going to give you the good, the bad, and the ugly, and don't have a reason to hide that or put a Band-Aid on it, because facts are facts. What I can do, and I hear you, let me go back, I'll work with the team. I'm not comfortable with all the information that I have, because I don't think it completely answers the questions that are in your legislation, because I tried to go back and compare the two. And so let me go back, work with the team, and I know next week we start our budget hearings. The first couple of days, I think the first day is like unions, and then we get into public safety a little bit. Before we get into ATL DLT and some of those departments, let me commit to getting that back to you, because that's where, before we get into ATL DLT, as well as Dean and Parks and Recreation, that we will have that information to you before we get to those budget hearings.
I appreciate it, I just, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you, Madam CEO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions from my colleagues, so Madam CEO, thank you once again.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the agenda, we do have one special guest. This is the only time we can call him a special guest, because this is his first meeting with us, our new GM of the airport, Mr. Smith, if you would like to say a couple of words to the committee, we're definitely welcome.
Yeah, I know it's not going to be long before I can no longer feel special. Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. It is truly an honor to be here. You know, every day, the last 28 days in Atlanta have been good days for me, and based on your sentiments, I expect that the balance of my time here will also be good days, working in partnership with you. I will say this, as I said in my, in my statement, you know, when the mayor offered me this opportunity, it was truly a capstone in my career. I've been in this business for some 34, 35 years, three different airports. The opportunity to, to serve with the team and lead this team to what we refer to as next level, for what is the busiest and most efficient airport in the world, will be a capstone in any professional's career. And that is only supersized by the fact that I have a chance to live, work, and play in this amazing city called Atlanta, and to serve this amazing public. So thank you for the opportunity to say, you know, welcome. I look forward to working with this committee and the entire council. I've met with some of you already, looking forward to meeting with each and every one of you individually. And again, I'm an open book as well, and so you'll find that anything you need to talk to me about, I will be open, and I'll make myself available, and I will be as transparent as possible. So again, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and looking forward to working with you and the team.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, comments, anything?
Not right now. My first day, my first time here, I could answer questions?
No, welcome. As you heard from public comment, there are some concerns at the airport. We are the most watched airport, because everyone wants to be us. So with you leading that, we're here to help you. Guide that boat, steer that boat, whatever way you want to call it, but you definitely have a committee and a council and administration that stands with you. But as you heard today, there are some concerns, and I know some of my colleagues will follow up with that, and so we will let you off today. Easy, but welcome aboard, and thank you for accepting the challenge.
Thank you as well.
Okay, colleagues, that gets us back to our regular agenda, which starts off with communications.
Item number 125C0055, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens appointing Ms. Angela Bowers to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee.
I believe Ms. Bowers is here today? Hello, Ms. Bowers, as you approach, yes, give us your name and tell us a little bit about you.
Sure. Good morning, good morning, Councilmember President, sorry, not President, Councilmember Chairman, Amos, Hillis, Lewis, I have all of the committee members here, Overstreet, Dozier, and Juan, all in attendance, and those watching at home and who love and serve the great city of Atlanta. I'm Angela Bowers, and I'm honored to stand before you as the recommended appointee for our Honorable Mayor Andre Dickens to the ADA Advisory Committee. A little bit about me, I'm a long-serving, experienced, battle-tested government professional with 18 years of leadership experience in the city of Atlanta that spans across five departments. I started my career here in the Department of Public Works, left on a riff, shout out to Mayor Franklin a long time ago, but I was able to come back due to Michelle Nguyen, who is in Transportation, as the Parking Program Manager. After that, I went to ATL 311 and spent the majority of my career here in public safety, specifically Atlanta Fire Rescue, as the Performance Manager there for the past six and a half years. I currently serve as the city's first Director of Disability Access and ADA Compliance, where I'm proud to dedicate my service to improving accessibility for our citizens, visitors, and employees, and just constantly evaluating our processes across the departments to ensure that we are ADA compliant. Thankful for the opportunity to serve, and if selected to this committee, I will bring the spirit of collaboration, understanding of policy, and utilize my knowledge as a certified ADA Coordinator and project management professional to the team, just to ensure that we can carry out the purpose of the committee and bring forth recommendations to ATL DLT and Chauncey Battle Williams, who is doing a phenomenal job in the role as ADA Director in ATL DLT. When I joined the team in November through Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, she was one of the first people that I met with along with Commissioner Kavanis, and the work that they have done to lift this consent decree and ensure that we are compliant is remarkable. So I just wanted to say that to Chauncey publicly. I'd like to thank Deputy Chief of Staff Theo Pace for his recommendation, our Chief Equity Officer Candice Stancio, and Deputy Chief Equity Officer Gabrielle Slade, along with the Modi team for their support, and you all for considering me today. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yay, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Ms. Bowers, thank you for your service. Staff will be in contact with you about the next steps.
You're welcome, thank you.
That moves us to our consent agenda ordinance for first readings. Mr. Johnson.
Item number 22501240, an ordinance by Transportation Committee waiving the competitive source selection requirements contained in Article 10, Division 4, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute agreements with sanitation service providers, security services, and any other vendors necessary to support the City of Atlanta's production of the 2025 Atlanta Streets Alive program. On behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, to authorize the City of Atlanta to accept donations supporting the 2025 Atlanta Streets Alive program. Through the end of the fiscal year 2026, to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute agreements with program sponsors to authorize all costs to be paid from an all-sponsored donation to be deposited into the Safety and Mobility Capital Finance Fund as listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 32501241, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions to execute an amendment for contract number listed herein, curbside management services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, with MTI Limo and Shuttle Services Incorporated doing business as front row parking, to extend the term of the contract on a month-to-month basis for a period up to six months effective May 29, 2025, and expire on or before November 28, 2025, an amount not to exceed $3,250,000. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 42501242, an ordinance by Transportation Committee waiving the Code of Ordnances Source Selection Provisions contained in Chapter 2, Article 10, Section 2-1187 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a reimbursable agreement for the replacement of the central preconditioned area equipment on concourse T, A, B, and E with Delta Airlines Incorporated at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for a amount to Delta not to exceed $1,000,000. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 52501243, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions on behalf of the Department of Aviation and the Department of Watershed Management, and to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement number listed herein, Edward System Technology Fire Alarm System Parts Repair and Service Agreement by authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an amendment to extend the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months for an amount not to exceed $900,000 and for other purposes. Item number 62501244, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement between the city and wireless service providers to utilize airport equipment to provide wireless service throughout the main terminal, central passenger terminal complex, concourse T through F, parking garages, and plane train stations at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, which shall be for a term of 10 years, waiving Section 2-1291 of Section 8 of the City Code of Ordnances and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. That takes us to our regular agenda, second reading.
Item number 72501187, an ordinance by Transportation Committee waiving Part 2, Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 4 of the Atlanta City Code of authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute the Third Amendment to contract number listed here in 2021 Lemix Street Resurfacing Project Group 1 with Stewart Brothers Incorporated to add funding in an amount not to exceed All contract work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
I see we have several speakers. Councilman Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman. Question for Commissioner Kavanis, actually, I know a lot of these streets, given this Actually, I know a lot of these streets given this as a north contractor in my district and it's not just LMIG money, but the million from our district, uh, MAF accounts plus the one million or the twelve million total that we, uh, did legislation for, uh, a year or so ago. But I guess my question is, and we've spoken about this briefly before, but, you know, at this point, this is a four-year-old contract, so one is resurfacing, going to go back out, uh, for bid and a new contract.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon Kavnis, ATL DLT. Good morning, everyone. As we approach the twenty-six, uh, season and, um, expect opportunities for more funding from our state partners through the LMIG program and also, um, future opportunities with, uh, T-SLOSS or community-based, um, investment, we'll be going out to another contract. This was the most expedient way to get resurfacing done, considering our capital program does not include much resurfacing, so, uh, we went to expedite and get this rolling and we realized that from a mobilization standpoint, to keep the contractor rolling, getting work done and, uh, not having to go through, um, more legislative and creative processes, um, this was the most expedient way to get the work done.
And as we go, uh, out to bid for a new resurfacing contract or contracts, as we're in the case now, are we still looking to divide the city into two or put it into one or perhaps more than two? What is the thought there?
So, we'll have to, uh, talk to our procurement, uh, department about the best way, means and methods, considering the industry is changing, um, there's been mergers and acquisitions and changes to, uh, obviously trade, but, um, we are going to approach that with procurement as we get closer, but, uh, it's been very helpful having North-South so that, uh, we can be more agile and flexible about, uh, changes to the program.
Well, I, I would push back a little bit on the timing, you say when we get closer, but as you very well know, as a department head, um, you know, uh, spring resurfacing in twenty-six, we're going to start in, you know, probably March, uh, maybe before, but, um, you know what the story in procurement is, it's not a quick process, so I hope this, uh, process will move along, uh, sooner rather than later.
Yes, and I apologize, the, um, idea of, uh, LMIG twenty-six funding is more so for, um, the twenty-six cycle, so that's a bit further out than actual, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. So, we'll be working with all of our council as we've been discussing, uh, streets and our, uh, street rating system.
Understood, and as I'll, uh, take the opportunity to, again, request, I know we, I believe, completed a new PCI study, uh, so as we look to, uh, find out what roads we all want to resurface next and, uh, you know, that has been, I believe, six, seven years since that last PCI, uh, so when can we expect to get that information?
I can't give you an actual date, but I can tell you that we're scrubbing the data to make sure that it's in line with actual conditions on the roadway and, you know, it's been a, a very, um, innovative, uh, approach to doing our scans with AI and, um, looking at sidewalks and roadway, so we'll get that to you as soon as we know.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker, Councilmember one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I just want to understand, we are adding funds to this contract that is twenty-twenty-four LMIG money for, and these are new projects, right? They're not to, uh, cover budget shortfalls for previous LMIG resurfacing work, right?
So, we took advantage of money that we had from twenty-four to, uh, address, um, things we didn't cover for LMIG twenty-two, twenty-three and, um, um, but to answer your question, yes, this is adding to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Um, just on, on my side, a quick comment about something you said about how, how we're ready to roll out and you must check with procurement. Maybe I'm not understanding the full role of procurement in rolling out the users' information, everything from you to the airport, to where we don't have a process to where this is a four-year-old contract, to where we can slide that into a process and procurement and get the, get it delivered to the people. Um, I mean, that just goes back to, and, and I, since they were first reads, I didn't say anything, but all of these month-to-month extensions, I'll talk about procurement another time. Um, so that's it, um, on, I'll talk about procurement another time. Are we ready to roll with this paper? Is there a substitute amendment?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thanks, sir. Next item?
Item number eight twenty-five oh one-one-eight-eight, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to accept federal funding through the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the development of the South Downtown Pedestrian Enhancements, Georgia Department of Transportation Project Number listed herein, an amount not to exceed two million, eight hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations as accepted funds, an amount of two million, eight hundred thousand, two hun, two million, eight hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to enter agreements with the Atlanta Regional Commission, Georgia Department of Transportation, Federal Transportation Administration, and any partner organization for acceptance, anticipation, appropriation, and implementation of funds and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Mr. Chair, item number nine, we're required-
We have one speaker.
Oh.
Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say, uh, just from our South Downtown and Downtown Atlanta neighborhood folks, just how excited I am that we're putting in two-point million dollars into pedestrian safety in the heart of our city, so just wanted to make sure they, they know it's coming their way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chair, item number nine requires a substitute, but we have a motion to bring forth a substitute. The substitute changes the caption.
Second motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. The substitute increases the dollar amount to eight-point-seven million dollars and makes revisions to clarify Section four regarding the waiver of the ordinance language. Item number nine. Twenty-five oh one-one-eight-nine, a substitute ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute the third amendment to agreement number listed herein, twenty-twenty-one Lamig Street Resurfacing Project Group Two with Magnum Paving Company Incorporated to add funding in an amount not to exceed eight million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred five dollars and forty-six cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve as substituted? Councilmember one.
All right. Did I hear you correctly? Because I'm looking at our packet that you sent. We did insert language to waive procurement code on this, right?
Yes, in Section four.
Shouldn't it also be in the caption? I, I would say that we- I don't see it in, yeah, I don't see it in the caption, so I, I would, I'm going to add a condition that it be in the caption as well by Monday. Is it in the caption? I-
No.
Okay.
No, Mr. Chair. I mean, no, Councilmember Juan, excuse me.
Second thing is, so the, uh, section where it lists the funding, um, it doesn't add up to eight million. It's still the former one, so I, I'm curious as to where the additional three million is coming from? And if it's coming from the twenty-twenty-four LMIG fund, I got another question about that too.
All right. Again, Solomon Kavnis, ATL DLT. Thanks for, um, your questions. So, there was a additional, uh, add to this, uh, project that came from our capital program, uh, to include Fairburn Road. We went to expedite, uh, the delivery of Fairburn Road, uh, to include sidewalks and resurfacing with this current contractor, um, to avoid some of the challenges that, uh, we've seen with, um, using the capital program. So, this is an opportunity to include it within our LMIG program.
Uh, okay. So, this, this even substitutes a bit of a mess. I mean, there's no waiver, the waiver language is not in the code, um, or in the title. The totals don't add up and the Fairburn Road project isn't in here either, so I, I would ask whoever made the motion, add the condition that the, the substit, that we get a clean substitute on Monday that addresses all three of those. How much is the Fairburn, is that the three million extra? Um, all right. So, my, I do want to go back to the LMIG, the, the twenty-twenty-four funds. So, we just did on that previous paper, four million or so, but maybe five million. Here's another five million. So, we had ten million dollars in that that had not been programmed yet from twenty-twenty-four?
We just received the twenty-four programming from Georgia DOT.
Yeah, but I thought when we went and applied for that money, we had projects that were contemplated and th- these are the same projects that are contemplated in our application?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, so-
So, I would accept those three things onto the, onto the motion. So, you want to restate them or are you clear on the three in the motion? The three conditions?
Conditions, okay. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute on condition.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number ten twenty-five oh one-one-nine-zero, an ordinance by Transportation Committee waiving the Code of Ordinances source selection provisions contained in Chapter two, Article ten, Section two-dash-eleven-eighty-seven of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute Amendment number four to the airport use and lease agreement with Delta Airlines Incorporated that allows the surrender in addition of certain space on concourse B for design and construction of an airline club related and related projects at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for a ream, for a reimbursable amount to Delta not to exceed eighty-eight million, two-hundred-thousand dollars and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number eleven twenty-five oh one-one-nine-one, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an intergovernmental grant, sorry, intergovernmental agreement with the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of reimbursing MARTA for the resurfacing the general-purpose lanes of Hank Aaron Drive as part of the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill BRT project in Fulton County, Georgia, an amount not to exceed six million, three hundred, four thousand, three hundred, twelve dollars and zero cents, authorizing chief procurement officer to issue purchase orders under the MARTA agreement and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, one nays. This item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number twelve twenty-five oh one-one-nine-two, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section two-dash-eleven-eighty-seven of Article ten of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions to execute Amendment number two to cooperative agreement number listed herein, utilizing the source wealth contract number listed herein with United Rentals Incorporated for the purpose of adding funding to rent medium and heavy-duty equipment on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, an amount not to exceed five-hundred-seventy-thousand dollars and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number thirteen twenty-five oh one-one-nine-three, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute all documents necessary for the acquisition of certain property interest necessary for the Metropolitan Parkway, Georgia Three, U.S., U.S. Forty-One Sidewalk Installation Project, authorizing negotiations with property owners for the acquisition of such property interests, authorizing title searches, appraisal, surveys, and any other items necessary for the acquisition of such property interests, authorizing the mayor and the city attorney in event negotiations are unsuccessful, institute condemnation proceedings pursuant to OCGA thirty-two-dash-three-dash-one, waiving certain subsections of Section two-dash-fifteen-forty-one and two-dash-fifteen-forty-five of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, all contracted work and payments for property interest to be paid from accounts listed, numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Second. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number fourteen twenty-five oh one-one-nine-four, an ordinance by Transportation Committee to accept awarded federal and state funding in an amount not to exceed one million dollars and zero cents for the Fifteenth Street Extension Project to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five intergovernmental grant fund budget to reflect such accepted funds, execute any necessary documents for acceptance, anticipation, appropriation, and implementation of such funds and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number fifteen twenty-five oh one-two-zero-seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason H. Winston to allow a sidewalk waiver payment in amount of one-hundred-ten thousand dollars and zero cents to be deposited into the District One Sidewalk Trust Fund for S.D.-twenty-three-dash-ten six seventy-two Pershing Avenue Southeast and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item requires a substitute. The substitute incorporates the account information and attaches the sidewalk waiver memo and the map of the property.
Second. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you.
Motion to approve, um, as substituted. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, item number sixteen requires an amendment. The amendment changes the caption. May we have a motion to amend the paper?
Second. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item has been amended. The amendment revises the street name change from Edward Street Northwest to Edward Street Northwest that runs between Andrew Street Northwest and Acreage Street Northwest in the caption and throughout the legislation. Uh, item number sixteen, twenty-five oh one-two-one-seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos as amended by Transportation Committee to rent, to rename Edward Street Northwest that runs between Andrew Street Northwest and Acreage Street Northwest to C.A. Wembley Senior Way Northwest to waive certain provisions of Section one-thirty-eight-dash-eight of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be held for a public hearing.
Second. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
Mr. Chair, can you repeat the seconder?
You made the motion. Juan's, Juan made the motion. You seconded? Yeah.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is amended and held in committee. Item number seventeen twenty-five oh one-two-one-eight, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the third amendment to agreement number listed herein, on-street parking management program with SP Plus All-in-One Joint Venture on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis to begin on April first, twenty-twenty-five through October first, twenty-twenty-six, to waive Chapter two, Article ten, Division four of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances insofar as it shall be necessary to authorize the actions authorized hereby and for other purposes. necessary to authorize the actions authorized hereby and for other purposes.
I think there's conversation, so as she make her way up front, um, my first speaker will be Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll love to hear from Deputy Commissioner Smoot-Madison before I give my conference.
Okay. Hi, good morning, counsel. Thank you. I'm Betty Smoot-Madison, Deputy Commissioner for Strategy and Planning with ATL DOT. So the request of this paper will, uh, gives us the ability to maintain our existing service levels and agreement and contract with the current enforcement and current service operator, which is ATL Plus, um, while we undergo a fee study in which we're working with the Department of City, um, Department of Finance with. So we anticipate that that fee study will take about four to six months to complete. And so this extension of month-to-month will give us an extra opportunity to just maintain our current service levels, um, while that fee study is underway. The fee, current on-street parking fees have not been, um, changed for over a decade. And so we do believe just due to rising costs, rising technology costs that we've added on, um, as well as other administrative costs, um, that there is justification to change those fees at this point. Um, we are just required to do a fee study.
Okay, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just recognizing that, you know, y'all are looking at fees, I do want to just say we've been talking about this particular, uh, contract and the renewal of it and RFP for it for some time now. There's been a lot of interest by myself and by some of my colleagues and some folks in the advocacy community around the need to, uh, radically re-envision how we manage, uh, not only parking, but also curbside management as well with all the, you know, technologies that are out there, whether it's ride, share, RadHill, uh, DoorDash and all the above. Well, also, uh, fully recognizing to your point about the fee study, uh, the parking fees that were established decades ago don't necessarily make sense today. Do we need to have holiday and Sunday parking and, uh, for free in certain places, recognizing, you know, Falcons games are happening and so many big events are happening on the weekends? My request, just recognizing all the different things going into a lot of this, um, is that we have a work session. I know this is something we've been talking about for some time and I know there's been some conversations, uh, with the department and, uh, with colleagues about kind of what next steps are, uh, but I do think we all should come together for a work session, have this conversation out in the public so we know what the priorities are and what the needs are. And, uh, you know, I'm still trying to decide whether, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and say I, I would like to support this legislation on condition that we have that work session and have one scheduled, uh, for a time. I recognize that this legislation gets us to October 1st, 2026. Hopefully we won't need to do month-to-month to that, uh, extreme, but, uh, want to make sure that we can have some concrete, uh, next steps to have a more public discussion. So wanted to put that out there.
I think we definitely can do that if, um, I can work with, um, I own this, Mr. Johnson to find a time considering we're going into budget season, a lot of meetings already on the calendar, but definitely if we can find a time and convey it back to the committee. So, um, next speaker, Councilmember Juan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm curious about the timeline in terms of when, when we made the call that we needed to do a fee study because it seems like it's late in the game here. We, we've been talking about the delays on this for some time. Why didn't it come up then and why is it now just coming up? Because it, oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, we, and it's a fair question. So we, um, brought in a consultant to help us develop the RFP, um, or specifically the scope of services and scope of work. So as we were preparing that document and working with, um, city attorneys and the city finance team, it was determined through that process that we would need to do an official fee study. We had conducted, um, some benchmarking, kind of looking at other cities and, and what their fees are, and we had done some of that work as a part of the RFP development. But it was then determined that an official fee study was needed in order to, um, determine what the fees are and then ultimately legislate that and put it added into the contract.
Okay, I mean, I'm supportive of that. It just seems kind of, again, like I said, late in the game in terms of how long this is stretched out. Speaking of stretching out, so, I mean, we're asking y'all to go to October of next year. And, uh, so I understand that the fee study may take four to six months, but I, I'm trying to understand why we still need another almost a year after that to, to do this.
It's really extra cautionary and cushion, um, so that we wouldn't have to come back to the council at any time if anything came up, um, as a result of the fee study that required us to do additional studies or analysis, um, as well as we're kicking off our comprehensive transportation plan this summer, which does include a curb, uh, management and curb policy, um, component. And so we just want, if anything ever, you can, if anything was revealed through those processes, um, that would require us to just do some additional work, we wanted to build in that time. We don't feel that we'll completely need it, but it's just there just in case we need it.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. I think in my experience here at the city, we, we tend to use up every last minute versus come in shorter and earlier. So I, I'm, I'm not going to fight this, but I, I probably would have put a shorter time leash on it because to keep us moving, I mean, this has been extended and extended and extended. So we, we just kind of need to, um, do it anyway, but I'll, I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, uh, significant concerns that have been articulated in part by my colleagues. My concern is that, that kicking this down the road for another year plus continues to leave a huge problem, at least in my district. I presume it exists in other districts as well, whether you have retail and commercial demand. And that's, the city has largely abandoned, and when I say the city, I mean primarily APD, has largely abandoned curbside management enforcement. I mean, there's almost zero. If you want to park a FedEx truck on Peachtree Street and leave it there for 30 minutes, more power to you. If you're a Uber Eats driver and you want to leave your car along with four of your other peers on North Highland or Crock Street, go for it. I mean, the rules mean nothing. And for years, Central Atlanta Progress, Mountain Alliance, residents, council members have been banging our heads on various approaches to tackle this problem. And in my understanding, I understand why APD has other priorities than despite whatever, how we, how it's shooting fish in a barrel on a lot of streets in our center city to do this, but they have other priorities than sitting officers up and down the street writing warnings or issuing citations. And if they're not going to do that, that's a policy and strategic decision they're making based on resources or other priorities by majors and chiefs and assistant chiefs, then the opportunity here is for our third-party parking enforcement contract to address this. It currently does not address this because it is a very limited number of citations that the third party can write tickets for, right? It's a fairly small universe. Last year, we passed legislation that, um, thanks to the creativity of the Law Department, articulated a way for a third-party parking enforcement entity to have its, whether it's retired officers or hired third-party folks, to be certified as code enforcement officers under city code to issue citations for a very, um, in addition to what they can currently write tickets for, for a little bit broader number of, of types of infractions that is allowed by state law for a code enforcement officer to write. So parking too close to an intersection, parking by a fire hydrant, you know, parking in lane of traffic, et cetera. These are things that state law allows a code enforcement officer to write a ticket for. My concern by kicking this down the road until next October is that we're going to continue to have essentially lawlessness in the curbside enforcement space, curbside management space for another, you know, 16, 18 months. Uh, and, you know, I, I suppose we're all existing with it now, we've been existing with it for years, but it shows a lack of, um, attention to a problem that is, is a persistent frustration for folks that would free up, uh, curbside for its intended use, that we have laws in place to protect, whether it makes it commute time shorter, makes it safer to cycle, makes it safer to cross the street because of line of sights, uh, if you're a pedestrian. And so we're failing huge swaths of the city by not enforcing the rules on the books because APD doesn't want to do it or chooses not to do it, and we don't have another enforcement opportunity. So I, that's a long way to way of saying, we got to solve this curbside management problem. To me, the easy solution is in the next RFP, you include, uh, the code enforcement training that APD could give to these third parties to allow for a broader set of citations these folks could issue, but waiting till October of next year, I have, I have a lot of hesitation to support an extension for that long because of, because of that one issue.
Understandable, um, and we fully agree, uh, at the work that we've done with the consultant. We've actually developed multiple versions of a scope of work, um, just based on what we're currently able to do. So the first version is just continuing the, um, current on-street parking enforcement. The ultimate goal for us is to really have an all-encompassing, um, fully curb management service and contract, but there are still some limitations in city code that we can't add on some of these additional services without changing. And so that's also another element that we'll need to work through with.
So with that being said, I'm hearing there's some legislation that need to be passed. Do we put the cart before the horse by, if we know we're going that way building the future for the city, do we go ahead and do this legislation now to where it puts us in a better situation to go out with a RFP? So let's start getting that legislation rolling so we can get it to the committee. Because what I would not like to see is for, and then another question, do you know if we're doing a fee study for all the fees in the City of Atlanta or just for parking?
This is the, the one that we're working on is just for parking.
Okay.
From, I understand that there may be some other studies being done by finance, but this is just for the on-street parking related services.
Because once those fees come in, hopefully they're a complete, a package that we can go to procurement with and we can go out because I don't want to get to the end of this timeframe and then we, you come back asking for another extension because procurement is not ready or have not gone out or have not answered all of the questions and all the other terrible things that happen during the process of procurement. We need to get this done as soon as be possible and we need to make sure not only ADOT, but contract compliance, procurement, everyone in the process is ready to roll when, when you're ready. So with that being said, I cautiously but will put forth a motion of, um, support for this paper. There's a second, motion has been made and second, please open the vote. Still want to speak?
Sorry, just to clarify that with the condition that we do hold a work session, recognizing all the conversations that need to happen on this.
I accept that.
Thank you.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Items favorable on condition.
Thank you, that takes us to our resolutions.
Item number 1825R3330. Resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the re-engagement of City of Atlanta Retiree Franklin Rucker as Deputy General Manager Senior for the Department of Aviation, Planning and Development pursuant to Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, for a period not to exceed 520 days. Contractation will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and Account Number listed herein in annual amount not to exceed $340,000 since and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 1925R3434. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise a renewal option for contract number listed herein, Central Passenger Terminal Complex Fire, Life, Safety Enhancements Project, Construction Management at Risk Services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with NSMS, a joint venture to provide construction manager at risk and pre-construction services on concourse A, B, C, and E through the issuance of a component guaranteed maximum price for a renewal term of two years and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 2025R3435. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a airport, an airport use and lease agreement with Idihod Airways PJSC at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport effective from July 1st, 2025 for an initial term of five years with an option to renew for successive terms of five years through no later than June 30th, 2036 and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
Mr. Chair, can you repeat the mover and the seconder?
Mover was Farroki, second was Overstreet. That was you, right?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Items favorable. Item number 2125R3436. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to accept an update to the business name of airline and, and airport use lease agreement from Latam Airlines Peru SA doing business as Latam Airlines Group to Latam Airlines Peru SA doing business as Latam Airlines Peru and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 2225R3437. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise renewal option number two for contract number listed herein, managing general contractor services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Sierra-Gresham Joint Venture and Manhattan RFB Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Aviation for a term of two years effective July 24th, 2025 through July 23rd, 2027 on a task order basis and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Thank you, next item?
Item number 2325R3438. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise renewal option number two and supplement a task order fund in amount of $666,667,000 since for contract number listed herein, quality assurance, materials testing, subsurface investigations, and special inspections as follows for contract A, TerraCon Oasis Joint Venture and contract B, ATLQA Joint Venture at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport to provide inspection, subsurface investigations, and testing during construction of various airport improvement projects for the Department of Aviation on task order basis each for a renewal term of two years. All contracted services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 2425R3439. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute amendment number one to the airport use and lease agreement with Southwest Airlines Company covering the surrender of certain gates and space at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Motion has been made and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Thank you, next item?
Item number 2525R3440. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise the first renewal option for Special Procurement Agreement Number listed herein, Flock License Plate Reader Equipment Installation and Maintenance and Support Services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Flock Group Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Aviation for a term of one year effective from June 26th, 2025 through June 25th, 2026 with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Motion has been made and second, but, um, is, I, so to my airport people, it's been troublesome to hear news, articles that talks about the increase of the parking and then they always throw the byline in there, but car thefts are up. Can someone just speak to us about what we have done to reduce the car thefts because we know they have gone down? I know this license plate, um, reader and camera is just a piece of what we have done also, so I'd just like for us to tell our story than Channel 2, so.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Candace Brown. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Public Safety and Security. We have been working in conjunction with APD as well as a board to be able to enhance different locations and bring more awareness to our issues within the parking deck. We have been installing a new system to be able to protect and analyze who is coming in and out of our parking decks. We have put APD in these locations as well as utilizing contract security guard personnel. as utilizing contract security guard personnel. We've reduced our parking thefts down to 95 percent. So it's been a big increase in reduction.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then this Flock system is actually on our outer perimeter roads that actually looks at license plates and advises us who is in our roadway systems.
Thank you. So that was a motion that was made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Thank you. Next items, I believe we can take together, number 26 and 27?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Item number 2625-R3441. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated exercise, the final renewal option for special procurement number listed herein, Traffic Signal and Communication Project, Traffic Combo Number Four with Brooks Haney, Brooks Barry Haney and Associates Incorporated, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, for a term of one year effective June 15th, 2025 through June 14th, 2026, with no additional funding required and for other purposes. Item number 2725-R3442. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated, the final renewal option for agreement listed herein, Signal and, Traffic Signal and Communication Project, Traffic Combo One with Brooks Barry Haney and Associates Incorporated, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, for a term of one year effective May 9th, 2025 through May 8th, 2026, with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Motion to approve items 26 and 27. Motion has been made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 2825-R3443. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, to execute a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power Company for the installation of streetlight infrastructure for the U.S. 19 Spring Street Pedestrian Mobility Project, an amount not to exceed $195,700, $700,000.00. All contractor work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable.
Thank you. I do see one of my colleagues have a question. Councilmember Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to reach out to the department offline, but kind of while we're on the topic of the viaduct here, Commissioner, when we talked before, we were looking at end of April, by end of April for most of the construction being done, and as we see here on April 30th, do you have an update on kind of where we're at and next steps and when we can expect the project to be completed?
Yep. The, thank you, ATL DOT Commissioner Solomon Cavendish. So, Councilmember, we updated that those improvements to June in coordination with CID, and if you don't have the update, we'll give you that either via one-pager or communication with the CID. But actually, we're wrapping up the work. We should be all finished with the ASR coating on the concrete by May, and we want to have it open by end of May. So I say June, but you know this is a vital connection between sports complex, federal buildings, and downtown. So.
Got it. Does by June also include the extension of the MLK bike infrastructure or is that just vehicles that are cars that is going to be open to?
So there's a conversation that we will have with you, because if we're going to extend the bike lane, we have to have somewhere for it to go. So as we think about, excuse me, if we think about the contiguous improvements along MLK, on this bridge structure at Turner, we have to make sure that we have that connection and connectivity, especially with Centennial Yards coming. So we have a destination. We just need to make sure the connections are there, and we'll be working with you on the design.
And I guess on that front, I know MLK resurfacing is happening as part of the One Twenty Main Mall Ara. Is bike infrastructure included in that design as well, or are we going to have to go back over the repaving that we've already done?
So I don't want to confuse the Ara bond with the actual MLK structure. There's the bridge structure. The Ara bond includes a short stretch down by the stadium at Northside Drive. It does not include bike lanes because of the configuration. However, there is the, there are improvements along the structure, and we'll work with you on the configuration as that paving gets closer. We're currently coordinating with Centennial Yards on their construction to make sure the timing works out, but it'll be 2025. If not, it'll be early spring 26.
Okay. Let's definitely talk about the pull list, not just the viaduct but also everything connected to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 29, I believe.
Item number 2925-R3444. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated, to exercise the first renewal option for agreement number listed herein, Joseph E. Lowery Complete Streets and TCC with Precision 2000 Incorporated, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, for a term of one year effective April 16th, 2025 through April 15th, 2026, with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable. Item number 3025-R3445. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated, to execute an agreement for P Street Street Traffic Communication Corridor with Reedwick LLC on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year with one-year renewal option, an amount not to exceed $3,987,124.00. All contractor work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be amended to attach to Ipro report.
Motion to amend. Motion has been made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Item has been amended.
Motion to approve as amended. Motion has been made a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable as amended. Mr. Chair, that concludes our items for today.
Thank you. That brings us to laying our legislative agenda. Any comments, questions, concerns, Mr. Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind members of the public that this Saturday, our office will be partnering with Atlanta Public Schools to host a youth job fair. It'll be over at the APS Hub, former Oklahoto Elementary School, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We'll have not only job opportunities, but also resume writing, help, head shots, and we'll also feature. So we'll have breakfast here as well. So if you have any young people in your life looking for employment opportunity, either this summer or beyond, please send them our way. And then separately, after your young person gets a job, come down to Mosley Park on Sunday. Myself and Councilmember Wes Morning are hosting a Jazz Fest event at Mosley Park from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements?
Also, I will be remiss if I didn't remind you all that there will be a work session tomorrow for the Tree Protection Ordinance. The time is, what time?
10:30.
10:30 in the, here?
In here.
Okay, here. Sorry. I'm the vice chair, so I didn't commit all the details to memory, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
It look like we're done. Thank you all. We stand adjourned.